Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
At 7:00 PM, we need to call to order approval of agenda, approval of minutes, warrants, correspondence, old business, reminder town meeting, town hall update, ARPA funding, town report, personnel policy, property cleanup and ordinance, public comment and adjourn.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, approval of minutes.
Move to approve minutes, January 18th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
Know which one you're in.
These are minutes, not warrants.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Any discussion?
I'm in all of them. I was there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes of January 19th.
Move to approve, January 19th.
We approved them the last meeting on the 27th. We approved the 19th and we approved the 22nd.
Yeah. That's all.
Should be January 13th? Those were amended.
So January 13th was amended, so we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Not the 19th?
No, just the 13th. Sorry about that.
Typo. Okay. All right. Minutes of January 13th.
Move to approve, 13th.
Can I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of the 22nd, the emergency meeting.
You weren't here. You can, you won't be able to approve those today?
Well, I thought we already did that.
Yeah.
We couldn't approve them last time either.
Right.
Oh, because we didn't have-
I think because Bob, yeah, Bob was-
Bob was absent.
Okay, so we don't have enough people this time either.
We'll have to add that to the next meeting.
We'll have to add it to the next meeting.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Sorry, Megan.
I knew that one.
I was a little confused when I'm like, I thought we already did them. All right, minutes of January 27th.
Move to approve.
Second.
The only thing I have to say is that you need to add that board member, Bob Jarvis, was absent on those, okay? With that, can I entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve the 27th with the amendment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For warrants.
I'm in one of these.
Yep, I got you right here.
Okay.
Accounts payable, 22 to 24 for $15,463.28.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accounts payable, 210, 22 for $21,056.27.
So moved.
Oh, there's the updated one right on the top. It was misprinted. The first one.
The first one in this yellow? Nope, that's payroll. $21,056.27?
It should be $17,000 in change.
Which?
All right, this paper was on top. $17,245.32.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so just those two, correct, Megan? Now we're going on to payroll. All right. Payroll. For 24, 22 for $11,849.32.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Payroll, 211, 22 for $12,240.81. Mike is in it.
Okay, we're gonna have to table that one till next time because not enough of us here.
Right, so we're gonna have to table that one. Okay? Sorry about that. All right. We could open up for public comment if anybody has a question about the warrants and the warrants only, please. Please raise your hand and state your name and ask your question. Megan, anybody?
There's no one raising their hand.
Thank you, Megan. Moving on to correspondence, we have a letter from the Congregational Beth Israel and we're gonna have Rebecca read that for us, please.
Okay. So this is from the president, the rabbi, and the executive director of Congregation Beth Israel in North Adams. To the members of the Pownell Select Board and Pownell Planning Commission, we were deeply dismayed to read in the Bennington Banner about the anti-Semitic comment related to those Jews down in North Adams made by former Select Board and Planning Commission member Ronald Bissin at a public meeting on January 18th, 2022. Insinuating a sinister connection between Jews and money is an anti-Semitic canard that has been used for centuries to perpetuate hate and harm against the Jewish community. We were also dismayed and disappointed that every Planning Commission member remained silent in response to this comment. Although Commission Member Megan Randall indicated afterwards that she was quote "not okay" unquote with the comment, not one member of the selected group of officials spoke out at the moment, nor did the Commission or the governing Select Board make any public statement that antisemitism is unacceptable and will not be tolerated when interviewed for a newspaper article about the incident. Words send a message, silence sends a message too. Your silence sends a message to the residents of Southern Vermont and the surrounding areas that their public servants and elected leaders tolerate antisemitism. Silence in the face of hate, be it antisemitism or derogatory acts against any group, is not acceptable and harms individuals and communities. As elected officials, you have a responsibility to publicly confront antisemitism and all forms of hate speech that target the quote "other" whenever and wherever it occurs. So if you guys want to make comment on this letter, it was a very important letter, I asked for it to be read publicly, then I have some things I want to share with you before you move into public comment, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay?
I would like to say that I was taught to respect everybody, no matter what your race is, what your color is, what your nationality is, what your pay level is. I've always respected everybody, at least I try to. I think the board respects everybody. I'm totally against any kind of anti-whatever. I'm just totally against it and this really has bothered me and this has kept me up nights and I just want you to know that I am truly sorry. Mike?
Um. Anyone who knows me personally knows that anything of this sort, I absolutely will not tolerate. I would walk away from this Select Board right now even though I was voted in by residents and taxpayers if I felt that the Select Board supported or even if they didn't support but was not gonna act on something like this. I would walk out the door right now. I would, I will not stand for racism, antisemitism, sexism, it doesn't matter. I will not stand for it. It's against my personal values and my personal values are something that I take and I take them seriously, extremely seriously and my personal values are what I lay my head down to every single night and I literally would walk out the door right now and my key would be turned in. I would not tolerate it and I will not tolerate it.
Jamie?
I was brought up not to be hateful of anybody and I do not tolerate any of that type of stuff myself. I didn't bring up my children to tolerate that type of stuff and I guess the easiest example that I can give is that when I was in the service, we all bled red and we all were army green. There was no other colors, no other languages even though there was multiple colors and multiple languages spoken. And till to this day, when I was a supervisor, when something came to my attention, it was brought directly to HR, it was handled and people were disciplined. And apologize that the Select Board didn't openly, I guess, state something publicly in that matter. We did bring it to the attention and the individual did, in his response to being brought to the attention, the individual did resign from both the Commission and the Board. So respectfully, I believe we did handle the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Um. Well, honestly, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak personally on this matter for a moment. Because as you know, I'm the one who heard it in the minutes and in the recording of it and I brought it immediately to you guys.
Correct.
I think that a lot of people want to talk about intent. Well, what he meant, he didn't mean, he's just to this, he's just to that. And it's really important as public officials that we learn about the difference between intent versus impact because it doesn't matter what anyone's intention is in saying certain words. When you impact a large marginalized group of people with your words, no matter your intention around it, the impact is what's important, not the intention. So it's really important to not make this about the person and the intentions of the words they said, but instead to set an incredibly strong statement and this, and I would require this to remain employed here, to set an incredibly strong statement that, that, that clearly states that we support equity and inclusion in all of our dealings with the public and with each other as officials. And so I have brought some language here that I want you to consider. I don't think tonight is any night to be voting on it because I think you should open it to the public as well to give input on this matter. I want to share with you some of, and I wrote this, so I remembered it was here and you had a copy of it, which I was really surprised of. We have our mission and vision statement and in there, we do have some language and I believe it can definitely be made more strongly and a specific statement can be included in this mission and value statement. What we have now is inclusion of all citizens in civic discussions and decision making that is representative of diverse backgrounds and ideologies without being exclusionary of any marginalized or vulnerable groups. That's already a value that we state in our documentation. So I would, yep.
Can you just, for the record, can you give us the date that?
It was one of the first things-
One of the first things we did.
It was the first thing we did.
The first things you did when you guys were in the new board.
I didn't know if the date was on the top.
So it was approximately two years ago.
Two years ago. This is, I think I brought this to our very first meeting.
I think so. I just wanted to have that in the record. That's all.
I played around with, there's also in our personnel policy. In our personnel policy, we do have good, well, we have decent inclusion language and equity language regarding employment. I'll just read that. The policy of the town of Pownell is to provide equal opportunity to all employees and applicants without regard to race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, national origin, place of birth, marital status, disability, veteran status, HIV status, pregnancy, genetic information, crime victim, I mean, it goes on. So I would, I do have a beginning, just a rough beginning of suggestion of some language and I want to point out that there's two words that I added in here that I did not find in any other equity and inclusion statement and because I believe it's unique to Pownell and I'd also like to address ongoing issues with civic discourse we've had in this town over years. So what I've written is this and I'll point out the two that are added. The town of Pownell is committed to fostering a civic culture that provides the equitable respect, belonging, and treatment of all citizens. That commitment extends across all community segments, including but not limited to races, ethnicities, religions, genders, abilities, and these are the ones I added, educational level, and income and socioeconomic status.
Absolutely.
And LGBTQIA plus, we purpose that all employees and public officials of the town of Pownell would stand strongly against all forms of racism, ableism, and discrimination, especially in the course of their work and service. So I just put that together so that you would have something to work with. I'm proposing to you that you place perhaps this on the website and have Megan create a portal so that citizens and also people from surrounding communities, if they would like to give input into what could be included in such of a statement, that we open it up to the public and then we can come back at another time. I can take all of that and create something for you guys to review and to take public comment on the final product. That's my suggestion to you. It's obviously for you to discuss and decide, but I really wanted to speak very passionately and personally on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do suggest opening it, unless you have questions for me, I'd suggest opening this to public comment.
Yes, I had planned on it. Does anybody have any questions for Rebecca? Okay, so we're gonna open up for public. I'm sorry, Mike, were you done?
I, I just want to-
I was gonna say, everybody can talk for three minutes.
Yeah, I wasn't even at that point. I would like, I would like Megan to, excuse me, on the website as well, I think this part right here, I would also like her to add the parts out of our personnel policy.
Yes.
So any language we already have.
Any language that we already have written in our mission statement or the personnel policy. I don't think we need to do the whole entire policy.
No, just that one section.
Or the mission statement, but just those paragraphs or whatever. So I'd like you to do that, Megan. Please include that in those on the website.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, so please raise your hand. Remember to state your name and you have three minutes. Megan, is there anybody raising their hand?
Mindy Jo?
Mindy Jo?
This is Mindy Jo from Burdick's Park. You guys are making me a little nervous here. All right, dictating language even on a political stance. Years ago, and I'm looking for the commercial, Shapiro's Used Cars, okay? That's where that comment was going because of the fact of the junk cars. All the junk cars is what Megan kept talking about. All right, so I'm just getting really upset at, at all of it. Nobody should be calling anybody, no names. I'm, I'm, I'm not for that either, okay? However, we're dictating words, all right, words, feelings. Feelings, when it comes to feelings, they don't matter. Facts matter. The facts of the matter is, okay? I'm not trying to disrespect anybody, but my rights don't end where somebody's feelings begin. That's what's wrong with the world today. Everybody gets so hurt over something and your feelings will change. You're not the same people we were 10 minutes ago. We weren't the same people we were 10 years ago. None of us in my generation were raised like this, okay? You get your feelings hurt. Not everybody gets a gold ribbon. My rights don't end where your feelings begin. I don't mean to disrespect anybody. However, this is dangerous territory and this is what's wrong with the United States of America today. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please raise your hand and state your name. Megan?
Not sure who it is. iPhone?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name.
Yes, yes, of course. This is Jenny Dewar. I'm gonna read the letter I sent to all of you. I appreciate Rebecca, all of what you came up with as well. This is a letter I sent to you all, so you've already heard it. In light of the unfortunate situation with Mr. Bazan and some subsequent offensive comments made in an effort to defend him, I hope the town of Pownell will examine our necessary acceptance of community members of all races, religions, identity, et cetera. Comments like quote "being too politically correct", quote "context of the conversation", quote "hate agendas", and quote "wokest philosophies" in regard to Mr. Bazan saying quote "just ask those Jews down in North Adams" unquote, show that we have members of the community who do not understand the gravity of Mr. Bazan referring to businessmen as quote "those Jews" unquote during a conversation about junk being a treasure to some people. There is no context where this is acceptable. Mr. Bazan's statement with his resignation was a non-apology. He defended his words by saying he was old and didn't know any better. Age has nothing to do with this issue. This is not about feelings being hurt. The Jewish people have been persecuted forever and this kind of comment continues that persecution. Imagine if it had been quote "just ask those blacks down in North Adams" unquote, or quote "just ask those gays down in North Adams" unquote, or quote "just ask those rednecks down in North Adams" unquote. It is not the term Jews that is problematic, it is the context in which the term was used. The context having nothing to do with the race, religion, or identity of those businessmen. The board can go further. I hope you are all, in fact, better than that and from what you have all said, I believe you are. And no, we don't all make these kinds of mistakes. Ronnie was celebrated by many people. You've given so much time, you've given so much. It doesn't excuse the words. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please raise your hand. Megan?
Mindy Jo?
No, Mindy, you already spoke once, ma'am. Anybody else?
There's no one else raising their hand.
Thank you, Megan. Anybody? No, okay. All right.
I'm gonna leave the table.
All right.
Because I don't believe I'm here for anything else.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
And anyone can reach out to me on that matter if they would like to speak with me personally. I'm happy to do so.
All right, thank you very much, Rebecca.
Send an email and you can-
Email. I'll speak to someone on the phone. I have no problem. This is an important matter that needs discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, old business, none, correct?
Uh huh, yeah.
Reminder, the town meeting. Megan, what's that reminder?
Just that the town meeting is on February 28th at 7:30 PM at the Pownell School.
February 28th, Pownell Elementary School.
Right, we're doing it in person.
Yes, in person at 7:00 PM. And Megan-
I believe it's 7:30.
Oh, sorry, 7:30. Excuse me. Megan, can I ask a question? Is Cat TV gonna be live?
Yes, I believe they're going to be here in person. I don't know if it's live or not, but-
They're gonna be here in person?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Town Hall update? Mike, is that you?
Yep. Um, Megan, Eric and I met one day, I believe. Just an update, I'm gonna read the email here that Eric sent us because we summarized it in an email. Plumbers are gonna finish up the basement area this week. Electrician will finish his basement roughing and installing the outlets and switches this week. Basement walls were insulated, walls framed and drywalled and taped last week. Walls are being compounded and sanded and primed this week. We're here now. The drop ceiling has been started in the bathroom in the IT room in the basement. Drop ceiling is to be completed next week in the main area of the basement. We had to add the drop ceiling for certificate of occupancy from Fire Marshal's Office.
And I saw them there this week, didn't I? The Fire Marshal vehicle?
I believe they were here Tuesday.
Yeah.
We met here Monday, so this update was what we discussed on Monday.
Yep.
To be honest with you, they've been checking. Fire Marshal's Office has been in and out. Eric thought they would be here on Tuesday. That's their day down here. We're gonna have the final, we should have a final punch list of the things that we need to complete for certificate of occupancy. They should have given us that. Or, excuse me, or he was gonna ask for that on Tuesday when they were here, if they came down, which he assumed they were going to.
I saw them, so they were here.
So we should have, we should have a final punch list of the things that we need for the CO and once we obtain a CO, we can move in. We can, we can put people in there. The alarm company installed most of the devices last week. They'll complete and get their system online once the drop ceiling is completed in the basement. The IT stuff, Megan, I think, didn't Eric say there was internet in the, in the building now, right?
Yes.
Yes, the internet works.
Yep, so, so our IT stuff is semi-up and running down there. So we're inching closer every day. The flooring's done, painting upstairs is done. Now they're concentrating on the basement. The temporary ramp for the exit for the last egress was completed on Monday or Tuesday, which we needed that for the CO. We need some handicap signage. We've reached out to Joel on that. So we're-
Almost there.
We're almost there. We're inching closer. We're almost there. We're, we're, we're gaining now. We're not, we're not that far away.
Excellent.
Um, we're not that far away at all.
Such good news.
Yeah, so you know, it'll be exciting when we get there. Let's hope for some good weather to get everybody in there and moving forward.
All right. All set?
Yep, that's it. Unless, you know, I'll take questions on that and public comment if anybody has any.
Okay. ARPA funding, was that? Megan or Rebecca, was that you?
No, but, no.
No, okay.
That's on there, but we, we still have the portal open if people, that portal is still open for, for public suggestions regarding uses of the money.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'll, I'll repeat what Rebecca said in case people didn't hear. Right, you are, but that's okay. We still have the portal open on the town website, which we opened back in October or whatever for suggestions on what to do with some of the ARPA money. One of the projects is gonna be the pump station at Alta Gardens, for sure. That's something that needs to be done and that's a perfect place to spend the money.
Definitely.
So we still have the portal open, so please, if you have any suggestions, send them out.
Okay. Town report, Megan, did you want to discuss that?
I'm not sure how much discussion there is, but it is a part of the packet. There's a packet on the website as well for anyone out there that wants to see it, but it's all there.
And if you are interested in a paper copy, then you need to take and contact Megan and she can make sure you can get ahold of one.
Are we sending out the cards?
Yeah.
Yes, right, Megan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not sending out the whole report.
No, we're just sending out the cards and then if you want to come and pick one up or have one sent to you, you get ahold of Megan or Julie, correct?
That's correct.
Megan, can you, can you make sure, and it may be on there, because I don't go on the website very much, can you make sure if it's not on there that that is on our website, that Town Reports will not be mailed, the cards will be mailed and you have to request one?
Yes, no problem. I'll update that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's on there and as soon as possible would be great. Please and thank you.
I think I'd ask for them to request it at least 24 hours in advance, not just walk in the door and ask for one.
Right.
Just for-
Safety reasons and-
Well, then-
To make sure that they're here and everything.
And if they've got already stuff they're working on, you know, the interruption piece.
Correct.
So.
All right. Personnel policy, did everybody get it? Do y'all want to take it home?
Do you need to vote to approve the town report?
Can we do that already?
I thought we already did that.
I don't think we did.
No, we had, we have to do it. We discussed the final changes.
We have to do that.
Oh, okay.
That's right. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. My two, my meetings are mixing together.
I move to approve the town report that has been provided to us.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Personnel policy, this is our we have to adopt this, correct?
There are still some um notes in the track changes on the side. So I don't know if you wanna discuss that further, but.
I think we need to
Review it again.
Review this policy and then
Well, redo it at our next meeting.
Put this on, put this on the agenda for
27th?
Um
It's on the 27th?
Oh, 24th.
24th.
Can we put the personnel policy on for the 24th, please, Megan, to adopt that? Or would change or whatever we're gonna do to it, please?
Okay.
Thank you. We just I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Well, I've skimmed it, but I haven't gone through it. And I'd like, I'd like to go through it a little bit better than what we've had time to do here.
Yep, I agree. Okay, so our next meeting is the 24th. All right, property cleanup ordinance. Um, you guys can, I guess, come to the table.
I'd like to, I'd like to get a copy in front of me before we talk about that. Is that possible? I didn't, I didn't bring mine, Megan, I apologize.
Do we have?
Have a copy of it?
Oh.
Do you have a pile of them anywhere?
I don't have copies.
Let me get Megan to
Yep.
I'm sorry, Megan, I just, I forgot my copy at home. I I've read it, but I wanna, I had some notes.
Um, I have it on my phone. Do you have it on your phone?
Well, yeah, but
Yeah, but you can't.
I can't read it.
I can't read that while we're doing this.
Yeah, I can't read my phone. I assume it would be
I wrote my note right here in front of me.
I assumed it would be my
As I was reading. I already signed this one. Is this the one that you're in?
So I think I'll take this off so you heard.
We're welcoming Megan Randall and John Bushy from the Planning Commission to our meeting at this time to discuss property cleanup ordinance.
Mike, you are
Thank you. 12,000's.
Yeah. Well, we can't sign this one anyway. Why you can sign it.
We can.
You can sign it.
We just didn't approve it.
Correct.
That's the, that's the one that's changed.
Michelle Peckrell was going to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan. I'm sorry, Megan, I just, I can't work without it.
Yeah, I hear you. I like a hard copy.
Here to follow along.
Yeah, it's very much easier.
Something else comes through my
Have, you know, the first draft, the second draft. So Michelle Peckrell could not make it tonight. She's undergoing treatment and Dartmouth Hitchcock.
That's okay.
I think you're okay.
Uh, Dartmouth Hitchcock and so by, Thursday's her day and by 7:30 she's exhausted. So um we wanted you guys to know that we had nothing to do with the article that turned up, right? In the, in the paper, in the banner. Um
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which, you know, laid out sort of what we said and I thought it's a little premature because the select board hadn't had a chance to even look at it. Uh, and be that as it may, uh, we, we weren't, and had the, had the, had the reporter called me, I would have told him that what this is, is a this is a draft. And it, it, it is a it's puts together, it's a, uh, puts together the um materials from, from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, a sort of sample ordinance that they give out. And then if you turn to page um three, I think it's three.
Duty of
Uh, the duties of owners and occupants, that is taken from um the Essex, Essex Junction ordinance. So what happened wa- in, in our process was that we all brought in and read various uh junk ordinances from around, you know, wherever we could, Arlington, wherever. I can't remember all the other ones that we looked at. And I just thought this one was well written and it, as clear as legal lease allows. Um, and, and that it, and that it focuses on something which uh, in one word really, which I think has, has, addresses the issue of what's kind of held Pownell back, in my opinion, uh, from, from pursuing a really uh, from working together as a town to, to to clean some of these, these blighted properties up. And that is that we are all reluctant, regardless of what political party we come from. We all believe in the rights of private property and we're very reluctant to interfere in that. But the, the fact is that with every right comes an obligation or a series of obligations or duties. And so um what, what we, what we want, what we're focusing on here in, in section four is what the duties are, what people, what people need to do to be as good citizens. So um let's see. Uh, in the, in the, so I, the, the first part of this is just uh all legal stuff you have to have. It's in the, in the Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
It's all your definitions and stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah, definitions, all that stuff. And I added a definition of screening, so I would really appreciate that if you particularly have your, have the town lawyer look at that, be sure I got it all right. I just, you know, screening means fencing, shrubs, trees or outbuildings so as to hide junk from the view of abutting households and, or traveled way, okay? So a- a- any other definitions were pretty much from the, from the template from
So you added
Screening.
Letter I
Yeah.
In the definitions.
And I hope it's all
Okay, no, I just, right, no, it's fine.
Okay, so um
I just wanna put a question mark there. I'm hoping so that I know, okay?
And then the other thing that I added, uh, which, and this is, we, we did nothing about enforcement or timing or penalties. We decided, you know, that's really not in the remit of the Planning Commission. And uh we did not wanna go there.
Select Board's the ones that
Yeah, you're the ones.
Make those ordinance to do that stuff.
Yeah.
We wanted to, we're trying to get ahead of you and give you an idea.
Our opinion and our idea.
You guys can sort through it and see what's really there.
Particularly the, you know, how to, what are the, what are the fees or the, whatever going to be. But John specifically asked, uh, Mr. Bushy specifically asked that we put in here um under enforcement right away, right up top that we put in there. Upon receiving a complaint about a property, the health officer or zoning off, uh, administrator will perform an inspection. Okay, so in, in other words, we do not want, we have, we do not want this to be something where a neighbor will go up to another neighbor and say, look at here, look at this ordinance. You gotta clean this mess up. You know, that is not where we are going. We want this to be civil and kind and um, and clear. So um so with every right comes obligations. Uh, in the requirements section, um, we state that as a citizen of Pownell, you're obligated to contain your trash. Um uh you're responsible to remove all litter and refuse, number one. And you're, you put it somewhere contained with a lid so that it can't blow all over heck and gone and doesn't blow across the street into the woods, down into the stream. And then if something like that does happen, you're obligated to pick it up that next day, you know, not and I, and this is coming from experience of what people told me when I told them we were working on this. They said, you know, six months this guy leaves his trash in the, in the brook, you know, um
Cleanup Day is a perfect example.
Yeah.
A lot of people out there volunteering and they're picking up the roadways and um, and some people just, I think they take advantage of putting stuff out by the road and people, you know, the volunteers are cleaning it up.
I, I, you know, really though, I, I hear a lot of talk about people taking advantage and um certainly um Tom Shuey was concerned about that as well. Um, I think that we will all feel so much better if this, some of these properties are cleaned up and if people start following their obligations as home, as, as citizens of Pownell that I don't think we're gonna feel uh like we're being used or, you know, taken advantage of. So um so I guess, do you wanna go through them one at a time? Is that? I just wanted to say that that's why we uh use the Essex Junction um section, you know, ordinance. Because I just, you know, I, I just thought, you know, if we're all talking about our rights, you know, all the time and not and not living up to our obligations that go with those rights.
Responsibilities.
Right, we're, we're, we're in trouble, you know.
And basically you guys will be able to take us home, go through it. You know, you're gonna have to
Yeah, I think they've had a chance
Look it all over too, to make sure it's
Yeah.
Legal wise, that it is what we
Angie said she's already had a chance to really look through it.
I have and I have a lot of questions.
Yeah. So let's start, we, should we, uh, should we, can we start with section four? Because that's the part that we're the most
Section four is the, is basically the ordinance from Essex Junction.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with a, some tinkering.
Right.
That makes it
But it's based on
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
And like the, uh, one of the problems I felt, I, we all saw with the with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns was that they were, they were really emphasizing uh junk cars. And I, none of us feel that that's really the big issue in
That's one of my questions, um, in the state of Vermont.
Yeah, there's
Um, you do not get a um oh my gosh, I just went blank. You don't get a title if a car is 15 years old. So we're in 2022, so any car after two of, 2007 does not need a title in the state of Vermont.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So for you to expect that people have their titles, if they have cars older than 2007, that is not gonna happen in the state of Vermont.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Right, but there's, I believe we already have provision that's
There is.
Where they have to be registered.
It's in the bylaws and it's
It is, but I am also concerned about people who collect older cars. We have numerous people in the town that collect older cars and they are in their yards and they have businesses and stuff. Um, and the state also doesn't give um declamers on cars that are over 15 years old.
Um, I was just going on what the, the statute is and
Right, I'm just telling you, the two cars.
And the biggest
That's what our bylaws say.
We don't, we're not really, uh, even us as the Planning Commission aren't trying to go after cars.
No, no, I understand that, but you also say trailers and stuff and I'm worried about
Why does it say trailers?
I know, I read it. It said trailers. Um, not like trailers that you live in, but trailers that you pull equipment with.
Um, oh, I did not see that. I
There's tons of farms that have numerous pieces
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
That are in their yards.
Can you find that? Because I, I don't believe that that
I don't remember seeing that either, but
I don't see anything like that.
At least I read it on the, online, the one that was sent to me.
Oh, maybe that's been changed um since then.
Yes, because we had changed some of these things out, so
Okay, the one that I read over and over was online that you sent me.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the one we
Oh yeah, that's from way back. That, that's from the, that's what I was talking about, VLCT.
Yeah, because right now, pretty much I haven't talked about trash. I mean, we haven't talked about cars because you already had an ordinance on that, free cars and that's it.
We don't have an ordinance by law.
Right. And um, we, we're not really looking at like scrap metal, that kinda stuff, things that people have, like old rakes and that kinda stuff. That's not really the bigger concern. The bigger concern is trash.
Yeah.
What is um like bag trash, that kinda stuff that people throw out or had, put a can out and it got knocked over and never cleaned it up and just let it go. Those are the bigger things that we're looking at. The things that bring vermin in. Um, the things that could be health risk, that kinda stuff. That's what we're trying to target.
Like when you say portion of the highway, you don't mean Route 7, correct?
Wait a minute, I, can we just go through this A, B, C and D? Because we're really jumping around here a lot. Where, where are you fin- okay, so as we come up to it, then could we, could we could we address it? I mean, uh, things are being thrown at me that I, I mean, I put this together and I, and I'm not
Um, can I give you a suggestion for process on ordinances? Just that it may help you organize what you're doing.
Yes, Rebecca.
So generally, you should schedule, an ordinance is a pretty huge deal. Um, and if the select board ha- is willing to consider this, this ordinance, it would have to come from you. So what you should do is schedule a work session to go into the minutia
Okay.
Of this ordinance. Um, that's not what was, you know, and have a meeting for that, allow people to come and give their input on it. Um, to go into something that you're seeing for the first time right now
Right.
Would not be
There, this is
It's gonna be dragged on forever.
Come in, give us
Right, I don't wanna be here until midnight.
Right, exactly, but I don't think I understood this would, this would not, this would have been looked at beforehand.
I did.
Yeah, and you even stated that the one that we got in the email had, there's been changes.
Yeah.
So therefore it's not the same as what we got in the email.
Right.
No, it, no, it is the same as
I, I didn't see
It might be.
Stuff that, uh, you know, I think
I didn't see anything about trailers or
One of the, one of the big
It deserves a work session.
Right.
It deserves an in-depth
Yeah, and that's why I say I think you guys should
So one of the, one of the
So, okay.
One of the big concerns that I have.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, and it comes from multiple angles. It comes from being the zoning administrator. Number one. Comes from being on the select board, number two. And it also comes from just being a resident in the town. So the junk definition bothers me. Because, and I'll, and I'll explain this to you, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Who is, who is the defining person for junk? And I brought this up at your Planning Commission meeting on the 18th.
It, but it's
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Because maybe my neighbor goes to an artist.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they have a bunch of old saw blades
Yeah.
And a bunch of horseshoes and
Like that piece I have in my fridge.
I'm throwing stuff out of my head, okay? I'm just throwing things out of my head and I'm not picking at anybody. I'm just throwing things out there. They have, they have a bunch of old metal rakes a- a- and the stuff is all welded together and they put it on their lawn. Who, who defines that as art versus junk? Who makes that definition?
I could answer that.
Okay.
We're not looking at that.
But
That's what I think.
But, John
I think the
No, but I think I
If it's in there, we would, I will check, I'll have to look
Play, play, playing devil's advocate.
Right.
Right, playing devil's advocate. You don't like looking at someone's art because you think it's junk. You file a complaint
And then you go and look at it and you say, I'm sorry, that's art.
But who makes that definite, who makes that determination?
Person who put it out, you know, somebody with common sense, John.
Yeah, but what's common?
I'm, I'm just, I, I'm playing, no, I understand, I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Who makes that determination?
I think, well, we, we need some kind of uh that's why I put in, we put in the screening. We, we, we need s- some kind of, we, we can't just go on as, as we have.
You see my point?
I do, of course we see your point.
Right.
You know, and that was Ronnie Bisson's point. One man's junk is another man's treasure.
Lucky, I don't wanna bring up Ronnie, I'm not here to bring Ronnie up.
Everybody says that.
Right.
We are all well aware of that. We're also well aware of the fact that there are people who have hoarding issues and other issues that they just can't deal.
Like I said in the planning commission meeting, I said the exact same thing. If someone has three old refrigerators in their yard and they're using them as a smoker to smoke hams and bacons and sausages and whatever, and you don't like looking at them, why does that become junk? Because they're an old refrigerator? But they're, they're serving a purpose on that property.
Well, we need to do something about, about the way that this town is...
Do you guys wanna a specific definition from us?
There is, there is one here.
Specific definition from us?
I don't know, John, I wish I had the answer, okay?
Like, I know, I understand what you're saying because...
Yeah, right here it says junk means old scrap, copper, brass, iron, steel, and other scrap or nonferrous materials, but not including rope, rags, batteries, not limited to rope, rags, batteries. Discarded household furnishings such as couches, chairs, tables, appliances or any discarded, dismantled, wrecked, scrapped, or ruined voter, mi, motor vehicle parts. All we are asking about this is that people screen it from the road, from the roadway and from the neighbors. So you're not, we're not saying you have to get rid of all this.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be perfectly, I'm gonna be 100% honest with you right now. 110% honest. The way this looks right here, without making some adjustments, I'm not for this ordinance with the junk written the way it is. Because, because, because right here is a perfect example under junk where it says appliances. When someone has an old refrigerator that they're, that they have a stove...
Okay, 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 I...
I, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
But you, you have brought it three times already, Mike. These old refrigerators being used as smokers. I've never seen one, that's not what I see on Route 7 when I drive by, stuff that's offensive, that makes me wanna just, ah, cringe, you know?
Avoid pointing out specific areas.
Oh, 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 sorry, okay.
For sure, I'm just...
All right, well, wherever...
Let's just make a work, um...
Yeah.
I would personally, my advice to you, if you would have it for you to reject or accept, is that you schedule a work session on an ordinance as, and with public input. The planning commission can be invited as well, and do it after you have a board of five.
Yes.
Right. Do it after the election, which is two meetings away.
Right.
Right.
Right, we're less than a month.
Cause you don't wanna put it...
Make it unique to this ordinance. Do not make it part of a special, I mean, don't make it part of a regular meeting with other agenda items. Let people come knowing what the conversation's about.
I do wanna say about the definition of junk, that that was from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So, yeah, well, I mean, I don't know how much, how much you could tinker with it, uh...
But we have a lot of people in town that collect that stuff.
Yeah, 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 I know. Make money, yes.
And they take it to the graveyard.
But, you know, they can put it behind a row of bushes or behind some trees or, uh...
Yeah, some, uh, uh, stockade fence, I mean, that's what I've seen, one gentleman.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, fencing's expenses, so, but, um, you know, behind a barn, a home and...
I suggest that you guys just take it.
Read it.
I, I understand you're gonna need a, a meeting on it or something, that's absolutely...
Multiple.
I believe that'll definitely, but can you then throw back to us your ideas and that we can, can change in it or help change in it?
We can offer...
And then meet, may, meet with us again on that later on. I know it's gonna go into a new, a new, uh...
Right.
Yeah.
Because you may be talking with these two and three new people.
If it's something we could schedule down the road at a couple of meetings.
The thing is though, that really, the planning commission is, I mean, I can see us doing a draft of this. I mean, you know, we were willing to discuss it and, and, uh, and, and the, the...
I appreciate the...
It's quite loud and chaotic.
Yes, fact.
I appreciate the work that you did.
No, no, I'm just saying, but I'm just saying that if, what, what, as a planning commission, we're supposed to write bylaws. We're not really supposed to write ordinances anyway, so...
We offer suggestions.
Yeah, we offer suggestions, and this is our suggestion.
Then we have to set up town, uh, town meetings to, after we tweak it, and then we, uh, set up town meeting for...
Public hearings on an ordinance and all that.
Thank you, thank you.
And you guys wanna a work session that the board's in charge of the, right, product.
Right, and, uh, I mean...
Well, you know...
We asked you for something and we agree that there's an issue in town with, and wholeheartedly, some areas are worse than others, and, uh, you know, we do need something, definitely.
You know, we've discussed too in the planning commission, the worry that if people aren't keeping it in their yards, they're gonna just take it somewhere and throw it in the woods, you know? So, I mean, there's all kinds of issues around this. But, um, you know, I, I did call the, the, I was interested and I called around a lot of, we all did research, Michelle as well and other people on them. And, um, in Essex Junction, they haven't had a problem with this. They've had very good results. So, um, you know, I think we might, uh, tinker with the, the definitions, but I really think that if we just keep putting it off and letting it go on and on indefinitely, we're, we're gonna, the town is not gonna just magically clean itself up like, it sounds like a fairy tale. I wish, I'd love to live somewhere that cleaned itself.
All right, so unfortunately we do have to put this off.
Okay.
After the election, I think.
Okay, get one more last thing in?
Sure.
Besides that, I would like to ask, I don't know if it's a possibility or not, but I know you got the federal funding and stuff for state funding that came in, ARPA funds. Is that something that potentially the board could set some aside to help? If we approve something like this, to help do some cleanup or pay for some cleanup that may potentially fall on the town? Cause we've discussed a lot of areas that might potentially fall where the town might wind up getting a little bit of that.
Town's responsibility.
Right. Where there was junk trailers that were banned in, um, yeah. They're not gonna get cleaned up any other way probably, but to clean up that mess it may take, may, when I'm not saying it's going to, but it could take the town's initiative to go clean it up at first. Maybe send it back to a tax bill or something to help try to cover some of that cost, but it's gonna be initial cost to get cleaned up. So if we could have something like that, if it's able to get us a, a small fund, if it's never used, great, it's not used, but have something set aside if, if it's available.
There again, we gotta do an ordinance before we can take and move on something like that, but...
And the other thing we were talking about a lot in the meeting, in the planning commission was incentives to, uh, and, and there's also a difference in opinion on that as well. So, do we, can we incentivize some of these, some, some people who just have difficulties for whatever reason, uh, financial or, you know, whatever? To, you know, help them out, like can the town, can we get a truck? You know, are there, uh, can we use some ARPA money for that sort of thing?
These are all conversations that we can have when we have certain ARPA hearings. And we absolutely need to have ARPA hearings. And the other thing that a planning commission could certainly do, if you wanted to create a proposal for a program and incentivize slash help assistance with cleanup, I would definitely have an eye towards making sure it's sustainable, not just a one-time cleanup and it's filled again in a week. But that's my personal advice about that.
How would you, yeah?
Well, no, that's for...
Come to the meeting.
I'll come to the meeting, you invite me to the meeting, you discuss it. But if you create a proposal to the board and you come up with how much you think it would cost, how it would work, you can present that at one of these ARPA hearings as a potential for funding.
Okay.
Good idea.
We'll do that, thanks.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Everybody has now the most updated copy.
Yes, we do.
Good, all right. So, thank you.
I think, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're gonna open up for public comment. Please state your name, raise your hand and state your name. Megan?
I have, I have one public comment before we, um...
Sorry, I forgot.
Before we open it to the public in general. Um, quick, short, I want to, um, commend our road crew, um, and our volunteer fire departments for their stellar work on the ice storm on Friday. And anybody else that I'm missing, I, I know the fire departments were out, um, cutting trees and opening roads with the road crew. I know the road crew was, um, considerably stressed. I've been in the seat of that truck, as I've stated before, um, on those kinda road conditions. And for what they were dealt with, outstanding performance. And thank you to every single one of you, um, that were out there, paid or volunteer.
From Friday right on through the weekend.
It was however long it took, that's right.
They were, they were busting their butt and, and...
Our power company guys, um, you know, those, those guys, I know from personal, you know, I know from, from a personal aspect, how many hours they put in, um, and how many, how many power company guys. So, um, I hope everybody stayed safe, I believe they did, and didn't hit of any accidents. Outstanding performance, I know they take some abuse for it. This time it was totally unjustified, if you ask me.
Yep, they did a great job. It was tough for everybody.
It was tough going.
It was tough.
Yep.
All right, y'all set?
Yep, that's it.
All right, let's open up the public comment. Please raise your hand and state your name. Megan?
Jim? Hello, guys, how are you? My name is Jim Cozes, North Mason Hill Road. Just first of all, I've got, uh, I've got seven items I wanna talk about, so if someone wants to write them down as they go along and we won't forget about them. Um, number one is I, I did attend the personnel executive session thing and I'm not sure of the timing, but unfortunately after the executive session was done, there was no, um, um, mention of if, if any actions were taken. So I would just, I'm, I'm not sure it was the timing of, um, connecting people, but I just hope that, um, possibly you could recap, um, what may have been decided afterwards, if anything. Number two is that, um, when it comes to the, um, ARPA funds, um, I'm just wanna just track that, yes, rules have changed and I'd like to find out if any decisions that are being made with those funds, even though they're now thrown into the general fund, if there could be some kind of a discussion by the town or by the select board in an open session, so that there's public comments on whatever you decide to do with those funds. Unfortunately, at the last meeting, when, um, the decision was made that they wanna use them for the pump station, it was not put on the agenda. So people did not know that that was gonna be a discussion. So I would just hope, as a courtesy, that it could be maybe brought up on the next discussion or next meeting to just confirm that that is what you wanna do with those ARPA funds. And then people had, do have a, a, a chance to kinda discuss that. And yes, if it is something that's necessary, I'm sure the town will agree with it, but it's just the idea of just making sure that everything is followed through properly. The next thing is number three.
I know, twice.
What?
I was talking to Rebecca.
No, keep talking, Jim.
Talking to her.
Your time's running, you don't know a minute.
I just wanna challenge that the increase in taxes for fiscal year 21 may have been increased improperly for about $9,000 for the, um, um, for the, um, interest on the bond. I, I think it could've come out of, um, 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 other funds instead of doing that. Number four is that, um, the, um, sorry, I got my little bit. When it comes to the ordinance, I think that Megan and also John have done a great job. I just like to bring out points of, we have people on Jackson Crossroads that have a mess on that road. We have a lot of junk areas that have char, cars that are on, in their properties across from other people. We need to get our mind away from the idea that nothing needs to happen. I have emails from Williamstown, Bennington, and other places that say that there are several lots that make a terrible impression of Powell.
Time's up.
Your time's up, Jim.
Fine.
Thank you.
So let me, yeah, let me take care of the two, two of the questions Jim has that, um, are two of his, his points. There was no action taken after the executive session at all. We would've, um, been clear on that and it would've been, even if we had to delay the start of this meeting, we would have had that open.
Yep.
Uh, the pump station was discussed months ago with Darcy President, I believe.
Yep, sometimes.
Yeah, I believe we discussed it twice. I, I think it's when ARPA money first became available back in, um, September, October. So that has been discussed by the board, um...
Openly, in a public session.
Openly, in a pu, in a public meeting.
Presentation, absolutely.
Yeah, right, in a presentation from Darcy. And I've spoken to her about that recently, so...
So that would actually fall under old business anyways, so...
We answered his questions.
Yep.
Okay.
Next.
Next, anybody else, please raise your hand? Megan?
Mindy Jo.
Mindy Jo, over here in Burdick's Park. I just wanted to, um, yeah, my mind just went blank. I'm making progress over here, by the way. A lot of progress. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. And, uh, I got a question. So if, um, if I wanted to meet with you guys face to face, do I, I submit an email to that?
You can come to a meeting.
You can come to a meeting.
Do I have to write a letter to request that?
If, if she need, if you wanna be put on the agenda, Mindy Jo, then you have to write a letter to Megan or an email to Megan, um, so that we can, by Tuesday, right, Megan? Is that when you want it by?
Tuesday before the regular meeting.
Tuesday before the regular meeting and then you would be put on the agenda.
Okay.
And you have, you would have to state your, I believe you would have to state your reason for wanting to be put on the agenda.
Yes.
If you had a specific question, if you include it in your...
Email.
Email. That way, if it's something that we have to research, to be able to give you an answer.
Right.
All right, and my other, my other thing is, um, Ms. Randall, she has dropped names multiple times. She's mentioned, uh, pretty much an address multiple times.
And we asked her not to.
Times, and she's been asked multiple times not to. I find that offensive and I don't think that it should be continued. Just saying, that's just my opinion, I wanted to put it in there. And thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Anybody else, Megan, please raise your hand?
This is an iPhone too. Yeah, hi. Hi, it's Jenny Dewar. I just, uh, I'm not sure who, I think it was Bush, Mr. Bushy sitting next to Jamie. I wasn't sure, cause we couldn't see him, so I kept hearing a voice, but...
Yes.
To remind that, uh, identify yourselves. I, Michelle's name was mentioned, I really hope she's doing well. I just, I'm not sure that you can decide not to mail the town report. Just check on that, guys, cause I, I could be wrong.
You already have.
Okay, it, then it's changed from last year? Because my understanding was that not mailing it needed to go to a town vote.
No, it's going to town vote, it's on the ballot.
It's on the ballot.
It's on the ballot not to mail it.
Everyone will get one this year.
Oh, oh, okay, so it's on the ballot not to mail it? Because I, believe me, I really feel that they shouldn't be mailed. I'm, I'm completely on board with that.
So...
Yeah.
Oh, so perfect. I thought you were saying you weren't mailing this year.
No, 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 I'm sorry if I said that wrong, no, no.
Okay, okay, perfect, great, perfect. Just wanted to protect you guys from not making a mistake with that. So, great, super. I will certainly be voting yes to not mailing them anymore. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, please raise your hand?